Welcome, everybody, and Happy New Year. And Trustee Riesland, if you would join us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're with the regions through the fire of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living just as a rock.
Welcome, everybody. This is a reorganization meeting, so at this time, I would accept nominations for the Board Chair for the period of January 2024 to November of 2024.
I nominate John Riesland.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion or any other nominations? Okay, I have a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and a second by Joe. Okay, any other nominations or discussion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's do a show of hands. So for the first candidate, Trustee Riesland, all in favor, please show a hand so we can do a count. Two, three, okay, three. And for Trustee Mantavigi. That's the majority, so congratulations. And now I'm going to give you the items.
I'd just like to say thank you for your confidence and thank you, John, for your service to the board. At this point in time, we will take nominations for Vice Chairman.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bell.
I nominate Jason Jenkins.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of Jason Jenkins as Board Vice Chair, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Jenkins. We'll move on to election of Board Clerk. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Trustee Fitzwater for Board Clerk? Please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Congratulations, Mr. Fitzwater. And we'll move to election of Board Treasurer. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I'll nominate Sean Crabtree.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Sean Crabtree. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Congratulations, Treasurer Crabtree. We'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Or requests for additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Time for recognitions. Billy?
Okay, I got several of them. I think it was, was it 21st or 22nd, Brad, we brought that?
Yeah.
Beef, right around there, we brought John and Robin Riesland and Jerry and Linda Phillips donated one beef. Hurricane Service donated nine beef. And Circle Nine took the 10 beef down to Hawk Springs and delivered them for us, so I'd like to thank those guys. I think, I think roughly 80 pound, or 80 bags, about 50 pound. Probably is what we got out of it.
That's wonderful, thank you very much. Any other, Brad?
I would like to recognize Mr. Hoffman for being recognized as one of the People of the Year for helping not only our school community, but our community at large, so congrats, I thought that was pretty cool.
And that was a great picture, too. Any other recognitions? Mr. Hoffman.
I was at Financial and I believe the Sunday after all the schools donated quite a few meals to students before the holidays, both Thanksgiving and Christmas. Can't wait, I'm at a board meeting in a while, so backen up quite a bit. Also had, had a family that wanted to remain anonymous. Donated some items and a lot of food to another family that was in need, and I thought that was really special, they didn't, they didn't want any credit or anything, so just think it's cool that we have people in the community that give back to our kids and help them out when times are tough. And then the reason we didn't have the last board meeting, just want to thank all the students for their maturity, the staff for their, their poise and composure, and all the first responders and parents who we worked with that day, I thought that was just a really good outcome for an event that, you know, could have been serious, but it wasn't really serious. But I was just really happy with how everybody worked together to make that a good outcome, so thank you to everyone.
Yeah, I, I agree, that was going to be mine, so I just want to echo that, it was an amazing job. Appreciate that. Any other recognitions?
This is kind of going off of that as well, but I would like to also recognize the lodge and the evacuation along with our staff and students, but the lodge staff did a really great job helping us feel welcome and entertained and fed and beverages while we were all there, so. I'd also like to recognize the 4th graders and the crew that worked on Operation Santa, they were able to help 103 children, different families, so that was probably one of our bigger numbers, so, pretty cool. Also like to recognize the Children's Choir, they went caroling downtown and I heard lots of good feedback from that, so the businesses liked it. And then also recognize Mrs. Whipple and the kids for the concerts, the K2 and 35 concerts, I got a lot of feedback on that, that was positive as well. Our December Good Citizen, because we haven't been here forever, so this is long. Our December Good Citizens were CJ Hebring, Daisy Dunseth, and Brady Christensen, so shout out for them. And then I'd also like to recognize our custodians, they did a fabulous job sanitizing and cleaning our building over break. It looks and smells much better, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else with recognitions, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the same lines, a couple of things, I would recognize Mike Jennings, who's done it for a number of years, but brought down recess equipment and cold weather supplies and things, just for whoever might need it, and so we always appreciate that he does that. Mr. Whipple for the middle school and high school band and choir concerts that went really well. And Sally Hoover for being here for every stinking concert there was for a month straight, or whatever it was, just those things don't get done without Sally, so just shout out to those guys. And then one to just be aware of, you know, we've been, we've been working to do a better job of documenting accommodations and things that we're doing in the sped department, K-12. And just in our building specifically, Leslie Morris has really stepped to the plate to develop a really good system that works really well for what we're trying to do, and it's an incredible amount of work and some skill on Excel that a lot of us don't have, but she's really stepped up and really led that in our building, so I appreciate her.
Thank you very much. Any other recognitions? Oh, Billy?
Yeah, I forgot one, of course, I'm probably gonna be in trouble on this one, but that was November and I forgot we didn't have a meeting in December, but Howerson Farms also donated two beef from North Dakota and processing was donated by Shell and Loretta Murphy and Michelle and myself.
Thank you very much. We don't want in trouble. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Paul?
Seeing as how we're going in the Wayback Machine. It was nice that we got invited, the entire board got invited to the pizza party for the 4th and 5th graders. And what a spectacular group of teachers and staff we have to get those kind of results. It was really impressive and they were fantastic, the kids had a great time, so definitely deserve the recognition there. We've got amazing teachers and staff.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? I think that concludes recognitions, so bravo to everybody. Visitors' comments, Dave Hopkins with the Pathfinder Youth Events.
Now you can.
Are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me? Um, I'm gonna start off by sharing a short video that gives a little description of what's coming to Gillette in August. And then I'll.
I really like the fact that we can meet people from all over the world. That's what we've already planned, everyone here wants to come back again, just, we've had the time of our lives, so it's great.
We will see you in 2024 at the Believe the Promise International Campere. Or in heaven, whichever comes first. Love ya, mean it!
So my name's David Hopkins, I am the area coordinator for all of Wyoming. Each church, some of them have Pathfinder clubs, and every five years, they come together in Oshkosh, Wisconsin for International Campere, which hosts 150-plus countries outside the US. Last time it, we had 55,000 campers in Oshkosh, which was pretty cool. This year, they've moved it to Camplex in Gillette and probably will continue up there. And as the groups of Pathfinders come to the area, they need a place to camp. Requests that I've been receiving so far have been anywhere from Thursday night, and most of it has been Sunday night, because you can't camp at the Campere until Monday. Campere starts Tuesday night, but they'll let the clubs start camping there Monday. And so I've been requested from clubs five so far to be able to camp at the church, camp on my property. And so, request has come to the school, is there any place that they can camp here any of those nights? It is, the request would be for a place to set up a tent and restroom, really, that's all that they need. Three years ago, four years ago, they had a union campere at, over in Gillette, no, Custer. At Custer, we, the union campere was there twice over the last 10 years. So that would be a request that these clubs, as they come in to Campere, need a place to stay. I've been charging them, along with the Adventist Church, the cost of the rental of porta-potties. Camp on the property and leave it clean. So far, the kids have been pretty good, that I've been around and worked with. Couple of them are from city and have different points of view. But as a whole, it's been a wonderful experience for me to be part of that club, so.
Do you have?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Do you have an idea of how many children you would expect need a place for this area?
It's a really good question, have no idea. Never hosted it before, right now, I have four clubs that have reached out to me looking for a place to stay. The biggest club is 84 kids, or people, and the other three are 50, 55-ish. I would suspect between now and October, your guess is as good as mine. August, yeah, August, one of those. Any other questions? Rally week. When I first heard that, I'm thinking, you're crazy, but not my department. The one advantage is they come and most everything is happening at the Camplex or at the Gillette School buildings. There's a few day trips going down to the Hanson Ranch that I'm aware of, and a few things that the kids sign up that they can go and experience, but as a whole, it happens right there at the Camplex. Walmart, sales, pers store during that one week is bigger than any other Walmart in the world. And they're gonna bring a Walmart to the Camplex for that event, which is interesting. Before, there's a bus going from Campere to Walmart every hour. But this time up in Gillette, they're bringing it to this Camplex, I'm thinking, that's a smart move. So. Any other questions?
Brad, do you have any input or?
The only thing I could say is I think, along with the leadership team, Teresa and everybody, we will have a leadership team meeting next Tuesday. We've been able to host pretty good-sized groups over the years because we do have, I mean, as long as we get the water turned off, key thing with tenting. You can use like the practice field, the football field, you know, different venues like that, you do have, we are very fortunate, if rain were to occur, you could move into, you know, one of the three gyms or all three gyms. We have used the wrestling room over the years when we've had fire crews in primarily. So I, I don't think that the space is an issue. I worry about the traffic at that time with everything, but I, I worry about, I think I'll worry about the tending and the showering and leave the rest up to somebody else. But I think we can work it out, I don't think it's, I mean, not knowing the number isn't a big issue, it just means if there's more, we'd have to open up more facility. But I think we have to have a Plan B in case the weather goes yucky.
So as far as your Plan B, which I really appreciate, up in Gillette, it's tents, period.
You haven't met my wife. I would tell you that I think that's a good idea, but I, what I would be worried about is truly to have the ability that if you really had severe kind of weather moving, that we would have the ability to to get everybody in, you know, I mean, the gym floor is not the best. But it's. But a roof over your head might be. And I think as long as we all think about those things, having enough shower facilities, police patrol would be helpful with that, so you don't have others that may not be welcome to the event, want to join the event.
Right.
But I think you have plenty of space, it just, I don't even think knowing the number is a big issue, I think we just have, have to know that we have, we are very fortunate here to have the facilities that, that we have. But again, it's getting, you know, maintenance and custodial and everybody on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't, I don't, I don't.
And I'm assuming we could come up with a, a number for those costs.
Yeah, I worry about the porta potty thing, my, I just don't like porta potties, but I think we have plenty of restroom facilities in, but if we don't, we can always look at that as well, but I just think there's a lot of things that we could sit down and, and brainstorm and and possibly an opportunity for some fundraising for some of our local activities for, you know, breakfast, lunches, things of that nature, but I think it would be a great boost for our local economy as well.
Yeah.
So you'll make sure Brad has all your contact information and?
Teresa, Teresa's got it all, and, and Teresa attends the meeting on Tuesdays and and everyone will be there and we can put some, we'll start putting some thought together.
Sound good?
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Brad. Yes, is everybody? On, well, and if, I'm assuming you'll come back to us with a plan, and at that point, we could, I, I don't have any more questions myself, so. Okay, we have a pretty large consent agenda. Oh, somebody's cold now. It is cold now.
Silo set the temperature and leave it alone.
Thank you, thermometer monitor. Okay, our consent agenda is fairly large, so if anyone wants anything pulled out separately to have questions about, please let me know. Other than that, our consent agenda is up for approval. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Mr. Jenkins?
I did, but Troy on that bus 10, that's, or that route 10, that's our biggest one, wasn't that? Isn't that the one we combined? What's that? Yeah. Six and seven, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have no old business to come before the board. So next on our agenda is an executive set, an executive session under Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, the lie, the lie, to discuss a personnel issue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Gentlemen, we resume our regular session, starting with new business of financial audit report. That one is crossed off, so we probably should have amended our. Oh, okay. This is probably the one I printed out at home. That's my problem. Okay, consider yearly meeting dates, let me switch that out for the one that was printed out for me here. So recommendation for yearly meeting dates.
And Madam Chair, those are in your packet. And not that you have to, but I do have some conflicts with the university meetings. So the consideration in the packet would be moving the January 10th meeting to the 9th, May 8th to the 7th, and September 25th to the, to the 24th, which would be Tuesday dates, instead of the regularly scheduled 7 o'clock meeting on the, on the posted dates in your packet there.
Okay, thank you. I would request for May, uh, May 7th is district elections, not school district election, hospital and, and other district elections for the county. So would we be able to do that on the 6th or the 9th that week? Does anybody have problems with?
Madam Chair, if this is a conflict, I can, I can try to work around the other end of it as well, I mean, it's just a consideration.
I understand, I just thought maybe we could do Monday? Silo says, would Monday be okay? Right, but if you're an election judge, you're there longer than that. So the 6th, could we do May 6th, is that okay with everybody? Thank you, I appreciate that, and then why are we moving, wait, let's see, June, we're moving from I'm sorry, July. Weren't we moving July?
January 9th, May 7th.
7th, oh, okay. Because we had July as the 3rd Wednesday, though, why did we go with the 3rd instead of?
That's your mandatory state budget meeting.
Okay.
That's Angie's, that's Angie's meeting.
That's what I want, okay, I knew it had something to do with budget, but thank you, all right. Is everybody else good with everything on the dates? Joe?
The March 13th, I will be gone in class, just so you know, you don't need to rearrange anything for me, just wanted to make sure you're clear on that.
Okay. It's a no-Joe meeting. Yep. All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approved the meeting schedule for this board for 2024, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Certified resignation. Oh, sorry, wait, no, appoint representatives to EWC, Bosse's, and Northeast Wyoming Bosse's. Jason and Dana, would you like to continue in your roles there for us?
If somebody else would like to, I would back off the EWC, only that, it meets the 3rd Wednesday of every month, which is when my board meeting is at my job.
Oh.
So I mean, I've been able to do it, but.
Would you guys like to switch? If you, or?
I can still do it, it's, I mean, nobody else does, wants to. I'm good.
Same as her, if somebody wants to do it, I'll gladly, but I'll, I'll do it again, absolutely.
Well, when, when are you, the reason I'm asking about switching is if her, then if it didn't conflict with her weed and pest meetings.
I'm fine with the EWC.
Are you sure? Okay. So we need to appoint, so I would like a motion to appoint. Okay, okay. So appointed. Thank you for serving in those positions, too. Okay, certified resignation.
Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board the resignation of Ann Will as a high school special ed teacher. And at the end of the school year, she plans on retiring, and I would. and I would like permission to post and congratulate her for her twenty eight years of service in Weston one, but forty two years overall in education.
Yeah. May have a motion. It's been moved and seconded to regretfully approve the certified resignation of Ann Well. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Others opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Ann. The twenty four, twenty five school calendar.
Madam Chair, my packet, I would recommend uh, the calendar that is there. Um, and as you know, calendars and weather sort of count hand in hand. And one of the things I would tell you that, um, as I make this recommendation, one of the things that we may be considering a change already for next year may be the upcoming uh, wrestling venue, uh, because of the addition of the girls programs and the popularity of our Friday venue. Uh, this year we've had to turn down several teams. And if we are going to try to have the necessary staffing that we may need there, we may need to change that tenth date to, to a black day and a high activity day. Um, so I just throw that out as I make a recommendation for you to approve a calendar. And it's like I said, it's like whether I, I, I'll, I'll change it in a heartbeat. But here, there, there's what's in front of you this evening.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty five school calendars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Others opposed, nay. Motion carries. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, uh, Robert Bliss as a bus route driver. And I believe it says here pending the background check, but I believe that has come in and, and he is cleared for takeoff.
Been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Robert Bliss as a bus route driver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, Katie Madden as an elementary custodian pending a background check.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Katie Madden as an elementary custodian pending background check. Is there? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion carry. We're up to information administrator superintendent and board reports.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award winning website, news LJ dot com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to news LJ dot com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
We're up to information administrator superintendent and board reports. Mr. La Croix.
Madam Chair, I believe at this time I am going to save my energy for the discussion items listed below and, and primarily um, the W D E um, visit that we had um, from earlier. So I'll save my time for later if that's okay.
Well, let's start with the quarter zip club. Mr. Bartlett. No. Okay. I, I really was taking first, but thank you, Bo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the only thing I have to report and I don't think I'll report on it, but if you didn't get to see the newspaper back in November, I think, um, lifetime activities uh, with Mr. Austinson and Mr. Beeler in the middle school, there's a little article in there about that. Just wanted you guys to make, to make sure that you were aware of that new elective offering that's just really popular and going to continue to expand. Um, otherwise I don't have anything else to report. And the Shanty questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That does look really interesting. Angie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have a report. I just have, um, after the meeting, I need, the, the treasurer is requesting that I have our treasurer sign the receipts for the county tax checks. I cannot sign them anymore, so.
Oh.
Um, efforts I'll have to have, and I have to, so it's pick them up tomorrow, so I'll have to have Mr. Crabtree sign one and then uh, when we do the rec board, I'll have to.
Okay. Ms. Mr. Crabtree, we're placing you in detention after the meeting with Angie.
No, just take a second. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Sonya?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I guess the first thing I, there's a handout that I gave you on your form. Looks kind of like this with a little blue column down the front. Just a quick standards update, uh, the state board of education in their, on their, in their December meeting um, went ahead with six of the ten standards to start the rules promulgation, which means they have a forty five day comment period opening pretty soon. Um, so that will be most of the standards that will have an opportunity to um, get commented on and all, once that memo is out and that survey is open, I'll send that to you. What this is right here is basically an outlay of kind of the change um, that's being considered at the state board for the, the reduction of standards, um, more so assessment, I would say. So you can see some of those um, definitions, content standards, performance standards, elective or non elective um, are written below. All this chart means is, uh, so like if I look at the math column, content and performance standards are listed, which means there's standards to be taught and assessed on the district assessment system. Kind of scaffolded so that while the statute says that we have standards K twelve, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to assess K twelve, I think is the interpretation. And so they're trying to reduce the load and take things off of district plates and off of teachers' plates by not necessarily requiring assessments. Um, of course districts set their own assessment systems as well. So I mean, anything in addition to that can be decided, but um, some of those just say content standards, like if I look at P E, it's content standards. So in, I'm looking at the K two. And then kind of goes down from there, but while you'll see content and performance, it would be taught and assessed. Content would just be taught. Elective meaning not all students. We have to offer it, but not necessarily for all students. Whereas others would be all students. So anyway, so that's kind of a draft. I don't think it's been approved, but just, I just wanted to put that in front of you so you could look at that. Um, we have started a substitute class here. We have six people in there, so hopefully in the near future, we will add more people to our certified sub list. So, so we can um, help that out and give teachers more, a little bit more flexibility and help our building secretaries out. So that's exciting. Um, we started doing winter fast bridge testing before the end of the semester at the middle school, high school. We'll continue with the elementary, um, and then lots of testing interim Y top testing as, as well. So lots of data meetings coming up. Um, I think they could consolidate grant audit would be my last thing. It is due on Friday, so that's kind of a big undertaking, but everybody's, I think, pretty well on track. I think we'll make the deadline, so. Like, that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Jason?
So those areas that don't need to be assessed, um, I guess as a district, is that we'll make that determination whether or not to assess those?
Yep. So we will, once this comes out, I think then, yeah, we'll, we'll meet as building teams and as leadership teams and kind of just discuss like what, what do we want our system to look like? So, cause we could always continue as we currently are. And maybe there's some areas where we can take some things off the plates for some teachers and some content areas. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just with new semester, have some kids going out and kids coming in. Um, it's going to stay about even. Oh, fantastic news there. Um, but we've, I think we've added about five or six. We've lost about five or six, so stayed pretty balanced in regards to that. Uh, the exciting thing that happened today, though, is that Miss Lep started. She's our ag teacher that you guys approved um, a month or two ago and um, it was nice to have that classroom full again and with kids in there excited to learn. I think the kids are hungry for uh, time in the shop as well as for ag class. So I was happy to get her on board today and working with kids. Thank you.
We'll have to see if we can get her to come meet us one night.
I had, I thought about that inviting her today, but I was just thinking to, to do as well.
Yeah.
We'll get her there all time.
Yeah. Next month. Brandy.
All right, um, just some numbers and since it's been a while, we finished up girls intermural basketball before Christmas and had twenty five girls show up, so definitely something to keep going. And then children's choir, we had forty three kids. And that's the morning one and they all had to be there at seven, so. Seven, seven thirty. And so, yeah, kudos to them and the mamas who, and dads who brought them. Um, and then as far as enrollment goes, we had new, six new kids today and we dropped four, so we're staying about the same too, so. It was good to see some new faces, so. And then um, Sonya mentioned our testing that we'll be doing. We also have Acadians coming up in there and our fourth graders get to take nap this year too. So we are doing plenty of assessments at the elementary school, so. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Brandy. Taryn?
Thank you. Okay, I had a big celebration in December. We put together that sped incentive reimbursement program where we helped um, some of our staff members uh, pay for furthering their degree. So Lee Morrell and Sarah Keeler graduated in December, so they are special education teachers and they're employed as parrots. So I think that's just great for our kids too. So we still have two um, staff members in that program working, but we, those two got there. So if you see them around, congratulate them. It was, they're pretty excited. Uh, second thing I have is our Special Olympics skiing team starts tomorrow on the slopes, so be thinking of them as it's windy and cold up there and um, if you want to ski, we still need volunteers, but that's all I have.
Thank you. I assume you would like to talk during the record meeting. Okay. Board reports? Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust will meet uh, in Cheyenne on February sixteenth and hopefully talk to a few legislators before that and during that. Um, it's going to be a slamming short full session, so. I didn't miss anyone, did I? Casey, sorry. How was vacation?
Uh, it's good vacation.
Yeah, good. Good to have you back here. Okay, future agenda items and early start for January thirty first for an executive session under Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, little i, little i, to discuss superintendent evaluation and contract. Are we thinking five o'clock? It seems like it was about ninety minutes last time. Yeah, the. Yes, could someone move to do that, please?
Move to advertise for an early start on January thirty first.
Sorry, it's been moved and seconded, early start, five P M, January thirty first. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, pause. So Stilly, Style? Style, we're going to say Style. Is it Still? Okay. Okay, we're going to go with Still then. We'll present the financial audit report at the next meeting, so that'll be on our agenda. State board visit. Brad?
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, and, and I think really what this document does is, is it sort of provides um, the board uh, and the leadership team with uh, some guidance. I think overall, as you look through this, um, there's some things to really celebrate. And actually what, one of the areas that is the most uh, pressing, according to their rubric, is the board governance, which later in the same discussion items, I have a recommendation for some training as well. So um, as you look through that, um, I don't want to ramble, but I, I was very proud of, of, of the team. I think the visiting team was very pleased, not only about the learning environment, but the overall climate of the district. Um, they're not here very long, um, so they don't, you know, when they say a snapshot, they, they truly mean a snapshot. So, um, without further ado, is there anything that the team would like to add is? To, I mean, please go ahead.
And just as a reminder, when you look at the graphs, yellow is adequate. So that's where, like, that's, that's where we were trying to hit the mark at, is the yellow part. Um, that we were adequate. I think how they described it is green is, um, I mean, obviously better than adequate. It's a pretty strong evidence that they have either seen or heard um, with presentations or the evidence that was provided or the interviews that they saw. Blue basically meant, you'd, you'd be like a model for the state. Very few blue was given when they do these peer visits. So just to give that as a, as a reference and um, every single person's vote is represented on this. They didn't average anything or, oh, I mean, ev- ev- you know, so when you see some red, some yellow, some green, some blue on some of the graphs, it's because all members voted and they just left it exactly like that. So you could see the different perspectives amongst the whole team. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did everybody get a chance to look at that pretty closely? Um, there was a lot of information there. I think it is something that, especially given that it seems to me that our board is the entity that needs to do the most work. Um, that this would be worthy of a work session at some point in the next couple of months. I know we have started with the um, ruling policies through, but we need a more formalized uh, structure for, for revision, looking at policies and revising them. So some things like that, um, I think maybe we should um, look at and, and um, stakeholder engagement. I, that one concerns me and, and we really do need to figure out a way to do that. And I do think we have a few people in the community who would be interested in, in forming an actual formal stakeholders group. And I think we need to sit down um, and talk to those folks about actually doing that. I think that would be very helpful. So that's kind of my take on that. Anybody else have any? Tina?
Um, human resources was the other entity that um, I saw that looked like it was also needing some attention as well, but. But I mean, I don't think. But I, I actually thought it looked pretty good overall.
Yeah, actually when they uh, mentioned that there were a number of things that would be an example to share around the state, so.
This, this group won't tell you, but I would tell you, um, one of the things that the visiting team, I think, benefited from was us because truly they were here to steal items to take back. And I think from that, three or four people are going to be asked to not only be presenters at state conferences, um, but will also be asked to maybe even go work with districts that are, are. with districts that are, are struggling immensely. Um, so overall, um, I, I'm not a real big supporter of, of a way that you, you walk into a business and you can, in two days, truly, um, put these kinds of things together. Um, but anyway, that is the process and, and it is what it is, so you have to take that with, with how you move forward. But I think it is a good guide, um, if, if the current state administration stays with this accreditation, no, visit, not accreditation, state visit. Um, it, it is a guide and I, I, I do think there are some things, um, as I said later, as we talk about some possible trainings, not just policy, but the way that we work. It's not, it's not, um, actually rocket science. It just takes a lot of time and effort to put it in place and then practice it. That's, that's really the, the tough piece to the whole thing. Because it's not that they just wanna have a packet. I mean, they wanna be able to physically see some of the work. So when you look at some of the, the stuff that they had for assessments, um, I would say a lot of them were quite blown away that a district this size could have been as far along in a system for students that we have. And it's not just the walk to learn, but walk to learn is what, that I think they get the most attention. Um, but it really is systems of support for students throughout the K twelve arena.
Anyone else? Thank you, Brad. Review policy, G B C A staff conflict of interest. Does anybody have any comments on it? For those of you who don't have it in front of you, it's short and sweet. It says, "No school administrator may hire or have his spouse or any member of his immediate family as a regular employee in his building or under his responsibility, i.e. as a coach, cheerleading sponsor, et cetera." And it says, uh, oh, that was nepotism, conflict of interest. Teachers should not endorse any educational materials solely for personal gain. Do we think that covers all staff conflict of interest?
Yeah, I, I think that we have, um, things in place. I mean, we have, we have, I mean, if you look at our district, we have lots of husband-wife teams. We have, I mean, we have lots of that going on, um, but I think in those instances, we've been really careful and tried to work out, how is that gonna work? What are we going to do? Who's gonna supervise that person? Um, and so I guess I, I feel like we have a really good system in place. And I, I think it, um, so I, the only thing I guess I would say about this is that, I mean, as far as the wordy part of it, I mean, I don't, I don't know wording wise, if we need to change anything up to reflect that we have a, a system in place for, because we're a small district, that's gonna happen, honestly. And we want families to come here and we want them to bring their kids and their wives and, you know, we want, we want that. Um, and so I don't know if we need to reflect that somehow in, in this policy or if what we have is okay.
Jason?
Would we just refer that to our attorney and have him wordsmith it and make sure it meets all the checkboxes? And that would be my recommendation then, you know, if, if truly that's something, you know, that's, that would be my recommendation is let him take a look at it, make sure it meets all the criteria.
Yeah, this, this one hasn't changed since nineteen eighty-seven, so it might be a good idea to have the attorney look at it. Nick, have you, would you like to comment on that one?
I've got it here, um, just a couple of quick changes, uh, that I would like to add as far as, uh, procedure, but it won't be a substantial overhaul. I'll get that together and have it ready for the next board packet.
Is that good with everybody? Sounds great. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Speaking of Love Now Law, hourly rate increase. I'm assuming everyone saw the letter, uh, requesting a rate increase from a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So our choice is to either continue our relationship with these guys or um, ask for another, or look into other law firms. Comments, questions? Sean?
I, I went to write on with every other attorney, um, in Gillette and elsewhere. I mean, it's going right to two hundred and fifty per hour now, so.
Joe?
I'd just like to comment, I'm, I'm sure we've sat with Nick more than we've wanted to, but I've been pretty happy. Um, they've been pretty thorough, they explain things pretty clearly, um, hopefully we don't have to use them as much in this coming year as last year, so.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? So we will need a.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Hourly rate.
Thank you, and I, and I'm assuming I'll ask this question after the vote. It's been moved and seconded to approve the hourly increase from a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour to two hundred and fifty with Love Now Law Firm. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried. So Nick, do you want that letter? Do you wanna redraft that letter? Or do you want me to just cross out an initial and sign?
It's just as easy for me to change the name on the bottom of it with the circumstances of having the last meeting moved. So I have no problem doing that real quick.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. Okay, board governance training. I, I won't be able to take part on the third. Would February, does February tenth work for everyone? You can't attend. The seventeen? Or the twenty-fourth? Yes, go ahead. That would work. Twenty-fourth is a Saturday. That would be good. Cause we are talking, is this six, eight hours, this training? Yeah, it's all day, so. Correct. We did not.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is this the state required public officer training that you're referring to?
No, this is a board governance training just for us.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, while Brad's looking for his phone, why don't we look at the committee appointments for the board? Is everybody happy with their committee? Does anyone want to change? We have.
The twenty-fourth is a possibility as well.
Okay, let's step, we'll step back to that then. The twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth, is that? I'm sorry, thank you. February twenty-fourth, I looked at that calendar Dana had been looking at when I said. February twenty-fourth, going once, going twice, sold.
What time do you wanna start?
If I could ask, could that include, um, only those that want to, not mandatory? But if we had part of the leadership team that wanted to attend as well?
As far as I'm concerned, sure.
I'm gonna push the accept on the twenty-fourth, correct?
What time are we starting this?
My guess is eight or nine A M, but I'm sure CeeLo and Brad will get back to us.
Let me work out that detail. I'm sorry, I'm not, maybe I'm not that.
And again, that'll be an all-day thing. Okay, thank you. Okay, board committees, transportation, Tick Jenkins, Crabtree, Riesland. Oh, that's transportation routes and salaries. Transportation maintenance and new vehicles, Bow, Riesland, Prell and Jenkins. Buildings and grounds, Fitzwater, Chick, Crabtree, Mantevigi. Curriculum, Gordon, Riesland, Fitzwater, Mantevigi. Finance, Prell, Riesland, Gordon. Mr. Crabtree, would you like to be on the finance committee since you're the treasurer? I think I would nominate you to be a member of that committee as well. There are only three, so if we nominate four, that would, if we have four, that would leave you three if someone couldn't be there for some reason. We're just gonna crab, cut and paste Crabtree all through here. Professional salaries and fringe benefits is Mantevigi, Bow and Gordon. Non-certified personnel, Crabtree, Chicken, Prell. Tech team, if I can make my little down arrow work, Bow and Jenkins. Need anybody else on your tech team?
No Russian hackers here.
No.
Anyone want to jump in on tech two? Okay. Um, so, and then our Northeast BOC's rep is, is Jason and our E W C BOC's rep is Dana. So, and then our Northeast BOC's rep is, is Jason and our E W C BOC's rep is Dana. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of this regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you. Have a great evening. Meeting adjourned. Oh, Brad, Brad needs that.
I would love to. Um, okay, so I'll just call the meeting to order. Uh, this is the meeting of the rec board. Uh, at this time, I would accept any nominations, uh, for the rec board chairperson.
Brad, I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Prell.
Okay, I have, I have a, I have a first. Do we have a second for, and, and a first and a second? Uh, is there any discussion or any other nominations? Okay, discussion.
I mean, we, we set records last year on two minutes with discussion. We ain't setting no records and I'm going to apologize beforehand if I'm struggling with how to word things. It's, I have no problem accepting that, but just so everybody's aware of that.
Okay, so seeing no other nominations and a very poor discussion on why you should, you should move forward, I would say all of those in favor, um, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Congratulations, or excuse maker.
All right, so the meeting's been called. We're on to action. Item C, visitor. Yep, I'm sorry. We're still on the board reorganization, um, do I have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Billy Fitzwater.
Um, is there any discussion? All right, um, we'll take vote, all those in favor, signa, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. That doesn't get to go down. All right, Billy is chairman, passed. I am, I apologize, I'm pretty nervous about this. All right, um, next one is board clerk. All right, I've got a first and a second for clerk. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, signi, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same. All right. Motion passes. Um, board treasurer is next. Is there any nominations? All right, I got a first and a second. Um, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, all right. That one passes. Um, next up is visitors, comments, staff input and special program. Okay, so just move on to the next. All right, we'll move on to the next. Action items. Can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Got a, a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Send, okay. On to old business. There seems to be no old business. We have to motion. Okay, and no new business. Um, for your information, we'll turn it over to Teresa.
I don't have a whole lot. Um, I made it through busy winter, I mean, community. I do wanna give special recognition to Sally too, because she did the cantata with me and the children's center. So she was there for all of those concerts that were community. We were quite busy over Christmas or before Christmas break and, um, facilities are full. They'll wind down at the end of, or beginning of March. Or beginning of March and then volleyball will start up, but we've got everybody happy, I think, I haven't had any complaints and so I think it's going well. If you have any questions?
Jason.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say as former chair, thank you. Seamless, I mean, I just sat back and you did all the work and you've done an amazing job and, I mean, the load that you have, I just, for me, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
So just so everyone knows, one of the things that we will have to work through with the summer group is. Um, a lot of times the groups that come here primarily, it's the bicy- bicycling groups that probably have been the largest. Is we'll work through a a contract or a memorandum of understanding is as well. Um, making sure that, you know, the insurance is everything in place and um I will also work with Nick. Um, because he has some specific questions about bringing a a group in with, you know, the potential for that kind of size. I don't know if it's going to be that much bigger than some of the other things we've experienced, but I suppose we won't know that till the day of the event.
Are you talking about for the one we just talked about, yeah, and we do have that. It's the ille thousand, whatever, the group, the twenty, twenty-five bike group that comes through every year, they'll. Be coming through this year, but they're so minimal, they haven't got back to me because it was over the fourth of July. And I mean, I'm going to be around, but we won't have staff or anybody, um, so I haven't really heard from him yet, but they typically have very good insurance. And then that big one that went through last year, they loved it, they want to come back, but they don't typically do the same routes every year, so they might be hurt before.
I just know, you know, in in looking at the different ones that we had to put together with the several forest fires. Um, you know, you really didn't have much control of numbers, um, really what you had to do is just make sure that. Resources were available primarily places to sleep, um, you know, and and shower when they come in and. And where we do have, I mean, we really have some great. Facilities for that, um. I just can't imagine if there's a thousand high school kids in tents, who's going to watch that event, but. I think.
My understanding that they're going to fence it, literally fence it off and. I think they're either off duty or they have their own security, one way in, one way out kind of thing, it was, has been my understanding.
Yeah, because I was thinking about contacting the sheriff's office for further guidance.
Would it be best to have him come out to the red board?
Or I think probably with Teresa's, I think with with Teresa's direct communications. We can do that and then I think along with Nick and the leadership team, just putting things in place with, you know, what does it look like for a hundred kids? What does it look like for for two hundred kids? You know, really, and I and I do, I I mean, I like tents, but I know that i- if you don't have a plan B for really nasty weather. You're just waiting for a disaster, because those kind of venues generally bring out mother nature's worst. Um, so, you know, truly if they have to use the the gym space for for a night or two, um, heck, they're young.
So, couple things, could we talk with city, county, because I was just even thinking fairgrounds. They've got that area and then if they had to go into one of the shelters that.
Yeah, the fair ends on July twenty-eighth this year.
So I can.
It is, it's the way, the January, the twenty-seventh, so it's my understanding that. The fair ends on the twenty.
So that'd be, I would just.
Yeah, I think the possibilities are endless, it's just everyone putting their thoughts together and and making sure it's communicated well.
Because like when I ran a bike tour in eastern South Dakota, we're talking, there were twelve hundred bike riders and we went to small towns and.
But eastern part of South Dakota is a foreign nation, so. We don't recognize South Dakota after the river.
But so, yeah, so I know that we always had. Back places, but usually it was, you know, in parks, they tent camped and they kind of knew. That they were at the risk, kids, I think, are a little different. But, you know, maybe I can talk to even the city, when you have the fire hall, I don't know, those are ideas.
I think the other thing really would be to work, I mean, we're going to have to let our local businesses know, because. That, that could be a crazy day at at the Maverick.
Well, that's what I did when that bike tour came through. I, because the chamber people didn't really let the businesses know, so I started calling them, yeah.
Yeah, I I just. I think, I think it's a great opportunity, um, I'm just glad I'm not going to be a chevron.
Because he was talking about two hundred and thirty people.
Well, and I had, I had a separate couple of people call me.
Oh, a separate from his.
Yeah, because I think he's getting full. And so I think he's had to turn maybe people away and so then they were contacting. Yeah, so.
And it's during the bike rally week.
I know, I can't believe, I would really, wondered if that was going to be one of their tours, this is the rally.
I think that would be the not to.
Yeah.
So I'll try to find out as much information as I can as far as what they're looking for and. You know. Try to coordinate it.
Perfect, thank you, um, we'll move on to discussion items. I see none, uh, meeting adjourned. It's better than I thought it was going to be when I was about to split.
Yeah, well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago. We were looking at maybe seven tops. But we're up to nine, po- potentially ten, we had a new kid move in, um, that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start, so that's going to put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not going to win a lot of duels because we don't have anybody over a hundred and sixty pounds. So, uh, you know, we're going to give up forty points.
Right.
In every duel we beat, so obviously it's going to be tough to make that up, we do have some good returners.
Get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and. You can give people a run for the money.
Yeah.
Probably going to get in trouble for that one too, but.
Yeah, you might.
Come on, Evvies, get out there and and go wrestle.